The meeting is now open. Clerk call the roll.
Josie Rich?
Here.
Raymond Parsick?
Here.
Can you hear that? I can hear it now, okay.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press, the Herald, and the Gazette leader on January 4th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to Stone Harbor's reorganization. Special welcome to our county clerk Rita Folgenetti, who's there in the back. We're now going to be calling in the rest of our council people because as you can see, we're a little sparse up here. So first, would councilperson Jennifer Gensimer come on up to be sworn in? The clerk will position you.
I state your name.
I, Jennifer Gensimer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Would Councilman Charles Craftcheck please come forward to be sworn in? Need it.
I state your name.
I, Charles Craftcheck.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Would Reese? Would Reese Moore please come forward to be sworn in? Unfortunately, Reese's wife Phyllis is ill and she's unable to be with us here tonight, and she sends her regrets.
I state your name.
I, Reese Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
Perform all the duties of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Would Frank Daleahan please come forward to be sworn?
I state your name.
I, Frank Daleahan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
Perform all the duties of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we have ourselves a council. May I have nominations for president of council?
Mayor and council, I'd like to follow one with our discussions from last January of this governing body. I'd like to nominate Charles Craftcheck to serve this year as council president, being the next senior member of council after Mrs. Rich.
A second.
Any discussion? Any further nominations?
I would like to make a point. Last year, we had a conversation, and it was not a vote, and I don't think it was an agreement on the seniority business. And I don't want to see that get locked into the method of selecting the president of council. That's my statement.
Is there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close nominations and we'll call for a vote. Can I have a motion? Nomin- a motion, not nominating. Have a motion approving? That's what I'm looking for. I have a motion approving Charles Craftcheck for president of council for 2020.
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
No.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
No.
Congratulations, Charles. You'll be the president for the year 2020. We'll now have a vote for our nominations for council representative on the planning board. Nominations for council representative on planning board.
Mayor and council, I'd like to nominate Charles Craftcheck for the council representative to the Stone Harbor Planning Board.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd just like to ask if there's anyone else. If everybody read this, that it is a possibility if there's another council member. Charles, you've been there, what, two years now? If there's anyone else that is interested in it, this would be the time. I've done it.
I'd be interested in doing it.
I'd like to nominate Frank Daleahan then.
I got a second? Seeing no second. Any other nominations? I'll close nominations for council representative on planning board. I need a resolution for council member Craftcheck to represent the council on the planning board for the year 2020.
That's a motion? So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer? Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Motion for Roberts Rules of Order?
I'd like to move that Roberts Rules of Order shall apply to the governing body of the borough of Stone Harbor for 2020. Almost said 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, I would like to announce the standing committees, non-board appointments and board appointments for 2020. Standing council committees for 2020 will be Administration of Finance Chair Charles Craftcheck, members Ray Parsick and Reese Moore. Public Works Chair Ray Parsick, members Charles Craftcheck, Reese Moore. Public Safety Chair Frank Daleahan, members Jocelyn Rich and Ray Parsick. Natural Resources Chair Jocelyn Rich, members Jennifer Gensimer, Frank Daleahan. Recreation and Tourism Chair Jennifer Gensimer, Jocelyn Rich, and Charles Craftcheck. Utilities Chair Reese Moore, members Frank Daleahan, Jennifer Gensimer. May I have a motion to confirm the standing committees for 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will now read the non-board appointments for 2020. Borough Administrator Jill Goucher, January 1st to January 31st, 2020. Borough Administrator Robert J. Smith, January 21st to 2020. Deputy Borough Clerk Carrie Basaco, Municipal Assessment Certification Officer Suzanne C. Stanford. Director of Finance James Kraft. Tax Search Officer Deborah Candelory. Construction Official Michael Kuchinbear. Director of Public Works Grant Russ. Stormwater Management Coordinator Grant Russ. Recycling Coordinator Lisa Cressy. Clean Community Act Coordinator Lisa Cressy. Deputy Office of Emergency Management Roger Stanford. Zoning Officer Ray Poudrié. Municipal Court Administrator Deborah Scott. Deputy Court Administrator Laura Neeld. Uniform Fire Code Official Roger Stanford. Fire Inspectors James Bailey and Roger Stanford. Beach Patrol Captain Stephen Basaco. Recreation Director Tina M. Prickett. Tourism Director Jenny Olson. May I have a motion confirming the non-board appointments for 2020?
So moved.
Got a second? Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, boards and committee appointments for 2020. Go Green Community, the following people are being appointed for one year. Larry Kratzser, Robin Prokaisen, Grant Russ, Rebecca Jabula. I hope I didn't massacre that name. Joe, did I? Okay. I apologize, Rebecca. Joe Hughes, Ray Parsick, Jenny Olson, Robert Smith, Kim Stevenson, Robert Brewer, and John Day. Zoning Board of Adjustment Craig Otten has a four-year appointment. Angelo Caracciola, four-year appointment. Bernadette Parsick, alternate one, two-member, filling Bill Cathcart's unexpired term. Nicole Jones, alternate one, two-year appointment. Mel Lyde, alternate two, two-year appointment. No, alternate two, two-year appointment. Planning Board Thomas Hand, four-year appointment. Robert Bickford, four-year appointment. Lynn Dubler, four-year appointment. Charles Craftcheck, one-year appointment. The Borough Administrator will serve a one-year appointment. Bird Sanctuary Committee, Grant Russ, one-year appointment. Rocky Torado, one-year appointment. Jocelyn Rich, one-year appointment. Amy Welsh, three-year appointment. Recreation Advisory Committee Jennifer Gensimer, one-year appointment. Nicole Davidson, one-year, filling Mia Denell's unexpired term. Luke McCrossan, two-years, filling Rob Julian's unexpired term. Luke McCrossan is a high school student that will be representing his peers on the Recreation Advisory Committee. Shade Tree Committee Terry Fisher for four-years and Elizabeth Carusi for four-years. Can I have a motion to confirm the boards and committee appointments for 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will now have a hearing of the public. Anyone who would like to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close. Oh! Sorry.
I would just like to congratulate the new council members, Gensimer, Craftcheck, Moore, and Daleahan. It's great to see the democracy at work here in a little slice of heaven that we know as Stone Harbor. So congratulations and best wishes to all of you. I'm Rita Folgenetti. I know I didn't say my name at the beginning, so, Happy New Year.
Thank you. That's our county clerk. And thank you for your support and coming here tonight. Now, we will, anyone else want to address mayor and council? I'll now close the public portion and we'll move on. Resolutions one through six.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolutions one through six for adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Resolution number one is a temporary budget. Number two is the newspapers in which the council business is present. Isn't it on? Can you hear me? Number three is the meeting dates for the council. Number four is the dates for parking meters to go into effect. Number five is the trash collection schedule. And number six is the litter abatement motion.
Any discussion on resolutions one through six? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mr. Gensimer? Mrs. Gensimer? Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolutions seven through 12?
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer a motion for resolutions seven through 12 for adoption.
Second.
Of these motions are for, consist of the following: the funding of the commissioner, compliance officer, small contracts, certification of receipt of material, utility exceptions, and contracts below the bid limit.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolutions 13 through 17.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer the following resolutions, numbers 13 to 17 for adoption.
Second.
Number 13, the registrar. Number 14, depositories. Number 15, tax assessor file appeals. Number 16, interest on taxes. And number 17, transfer the 2019 tax to 2020.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolutions 18 through 22?
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 18 through 32 for adoption.
Second.
This motion involves our cash management plan, our appointment of the borough administrator, appointment of the borough solicitor, appointment of bond counsel, appointment of alternate engineers.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question, and I would like to see if we could, the number 22, the appoint the alternate engineers, could we either talk about that now or just table that to the next meeting to talk about it? I'm not sure I understand it, and if someone can explain it to me, that would be fine, but I don't understand why we're doing this.
If you will recall, I guess it was in 2017, we did a number of RFPs, requests for proposals, and at that time, the council decided that we would have a pool of engineers that we could draw from and already have resolutions made where we could tap into them and hire them when there's different projects coming before the borough. And at that time, we appointed De Blasio and Associates, Mott Associates, and we also appointed Mott McDonald. We thought Mott McDonald had a lot of depth, an international firm where we could also, one of the reasons why we liked to have Mott McDonald is because they are the engineer in Avalon, and we have coordinated projects such as dredging, beach replenishment, so on and so forth. We thought a coordinated effort would be best. And then we hired Mott and Associates to have them because they were the planning board, the planner and the planning board engineer. And then De Blasio and Associates was hired as the borough engineer. So we thought that way, if we needed to tap into special talents, so to speak, or an area where perhaps one engineer would be a better fit for that particular project, we would already have them, they would already be approved, and we could move forward with it. And as you can see in our flood mitigation meeting, we have representatives from all three engineering firms are at all flood mitigation meetings.
I under-
Remember?
Yeah, I understand that. It just does not seem proper that if we have a project that is an engineering project, don't we have to put it out to bid?
Yes.
Yeah, you do, but you can coordinate a pool of engineers that you have as your key individuals for alternate special projects. So yes, you would have to put it out to bid.
The engineers prepare the specs that then go out to bid.
You do not have to bid your professional awards. They can be awarded on non-fair and open because it's special services, so you would not have to bid those. If you want to pick a pool of engineers, you can do that. If you have alternate engineers that have depth in area where even the municipal engineer may not be able to, that's why some municipalities do it. That's usually the reasoning behind it.
I hear you. I just wish we had had this talked about in a committee before it came tonight, that's all. I don't, I don't think that, I get it. I just, does anybody else have any thoughts? I just...
Well, my only thought is that we, you know, we, this is how we've operated for the past 10, 10 or 11 months, and I think at the time we made those decisions, we thought it was for the best interest of the borough that we could have Thornton's firm work on flood mitigation because we thought he was most qualified, right?
That's a done deal. That's going to happen until it's over. I understand that.
Well, I think, the way I look at it is all we're doing here is continuing that so that Thornton's firm can continue because we're nowhere near done flood mitigation. And that, you know, Paul Kate's acting as the planning board engineer through the master plan and whatnot, we are going to continue using his services. That's how I look at this, whether it be right or wrong, but I think that's all we're doing.
Okay, I thought when we hired Kate's that that was for the master plan, that is over.
No, 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 no. He is the planning board engineer. There's always a planning board engineer. And the planning board unanimously has agreed to hire him as the planning board engineer. It's, the, the planning board has its own professionals that, that the planning board appoints. And the planning board is appointing Paul Baldini as planning board solicitor and Paul Kate's as the planning board engineer. So that it's already, he's already been, he has not been appointed yet, but it's already been decided he'll be appointed one week from today.
And we have budgeted that.
Oh, yeah. Yes, 100%. Yep. As I said, there's always, there's, there's a planning board engineer and a planning board solicitor. Any other questions on that?
The motion stands.
So does the motion, the motion stands unless for any reason I should be pulling number 22? Should I call for a vote on number 22 in and of itself? Okay, that's what we'll do. So why don't you, Charles, why don't you change your motion for resolutions 18 through 21, and then we'll call 22 separately?
Madam Mayor, I move that resolutions 18 through 21 be brought forward for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I move that-
So this is going to be resolution number 22?
Resolution number 22 brought, be brought forward for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on 22? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
No.
Resolutions 23 through 27?
Mayor and council, I'd like to offer resolutions 23 through 27 for adoption.
Second.
This is to appoint Michael Kosky of Parker McKay as conflict attorney, Michael Sorensen as public defender, Lawrence Pepper of Brucio, Pepper, De Santo, and Ruth as labor counsel, Marsh McLennahan as the employee benefit consultant, and Leon Costello of Ford Scott Associates as the borough auditor.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolutions 28 through 34?
Yes, I'd like to make that motions for the resolutions that go from 28 to 34.
Second.
These will be the fire company stipend, our special counsel on affordable housing, our animal services, the wetlands institute, the beach survey which Stockton College does for us, residential fee changes, which we did this year, and the fire inspection changes.
Any discussion on resolutions 28 through 34?
I'm going to take animal services out of that because we did not receive that. We'll be doing it at the next meeting.
Yes, I have, I have a point to make.
Okay. On a particular resolution, 28 through 34?
It was either the wetlands or the animal services.
Okay.
And the point was that foxes were specifically excluded from the predatory animals that came under the control of that section.
They were particularly excluded from the animal services contract?
Yeah.
The animal services contract was not in the agenda because we didn't get it.
They pulled that from the agenda.
We'll be doing it at the next meeting.
Was it in the wildlife?
It might have been in the wetlands.
Wetlands, yeah.
Could have been in the wetlands, but it wasn't in the animal services.
Because I noticed it was specifically excluded from the, one of them, I can't-
So it was in one of the two agreements? So if the animal services is not part of the packet, then it would have to be in the wetlands agreement? Do you know that, Josie? If that was, anything in that agreement concerning foxes and being-
It was never in there.
I didn't-
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it was in there, I'm-
Oh, you're saying it should be?
I'm saying, should it be, yeah.
Oh, I couldn't hear you.
It's a predatory animal, and if we're talking about predatory animals, that should be part of the agreement.
The way that the, that the predator control takes place at the point, which I'm assuming is what you're referring to, is there's a predator control portion of our conservation management plan at the point, among the animals that are, fox is one of the predators.
Yes.
So I don't know how we can possibly remove that from, it's in the conservation plan. So what happens is US Fish and Wildlife or State Fish and Wildlife, they hire a trapper to do predator control.
Yes.
So the wetlands doesn't do it. US Fish and Wildlife or State Fish and Wildlife do. So I, I'm not understanding where you want the foxes excluded.
I just noticed that they were excluded from the list of predatory animals.
I don't know where that would be.
I think you're probably referring to maybe section F where in parentheses it says especially skunks, raccoons, and feral cats.
Yes.
It's, that's, she was just highlighting some of them. It's not eliminating anything specific.
I don't think that list is meant to be exhaustive.
Yeah.
It's just indicating that these are indicative of some of the animals.
Okay, my, I guess my point is, since we've never had any conversation or discussion about any other animal but foxes, I thought it was peculiar that it was not in among the predatory animals. So it's fine.
Yeah, definitely not intentional.
Okay.
Any more discussion on resolutions 28 through 34? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Ordinance 1562.
Yes, I'd like to offer ordinance 1562 for adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is our salary ordinance that establishes the ranges for 2020.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1562 on first reading?
Ordinance 1562, an ordinance establishing and fixing salary ranges for certain positions within the borough of Stone Harbor, New Jersey, County of Cape May.
I make a move that we, that ordinance 1562 be-
Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1563 be taken up on first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This ordinance is for the sale of property within the borough at 114th Street in the Bay. It's the sale of the property we talked about, nine feet by 110 feet, I believe, to, can I say names?
Yeah.
To Mr. and Mrs. Loth.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1563 on first reading?
The ordinance is to authorize a private sale of real property situated between the existing bulkhead on block 204-02, Lot 41, and the property line at 318114th Street.
Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1563 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that'd be taken up on second, third, and final reading, and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the fourth day of February 2020.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dalehan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Do we have any communications?
No, Mayor, we don't.
And now we'll take some comments from our newly sworn-in council members, as well as our not newly sworn-in council members. Why don't we start with Mrs. Gensimer?
Thank you for welcoming me to council. I am honored to serve my community, and I look forward to working with everyone in 2020.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you to all the folks who voted for me and chose me to be a member of council this year. As Jennifer said, I will do my very best to represent the interests of the homeowners, the property owners of Stone Harbor during the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
I also offer my appreciation to everyone for recognition as a second-term council member. Honored to serve as your council member again this year, and I'll continue to work diligently on your behalf.
As I enter my second term, I want to start by, first and foremost, thanking my wife, Cara, my daughter Anastasia, my son Henry, my daughter Nevis, and my little guy Harrison over there. It's, this job and its responsibilities require a lot of time away from home, and nothing's more valuable to me than time spent with my family. So we sacrifice a lot, and by my account, it's at least, you know, probably 36 dinners we don't spend together because of my responsibilities here. So I really thank them for their love and support and being behind me in my endeavor to help serve the borough and help keep this borough great, not only for the next three years, but looking forward for 20, 40 years from now, when these guys sitting here are enjoying it like we are right now. So I look forward to serving again. I think we're doing some great things. I really look forward to, in particular, looking at raising our elevation in the borough, because that's really something that is at the forefront. Sea level rise is really undeniable at this point. I won't debate the merits of why, but it's happening. So I think we really need to think 20 years out, 30 years out, and really, in order to preserve what we have here, that's going to take a concerted effort amongst our engineers and professionals to raise the level of our grade, and that's no small undertaking. It needs to be planned properly, and I think we need to get started on that in earnest, and I look forward to working on that. So thank you again for your support from the public, and I look forward to serving you. Thanks.
Me? I'm not ready for this.
I said newly sworn in and existing. You're among the existing.
As an existing member of council, I, you know, as Jennifer said, it is an honor, and I take it seriously, and you can always trust that I will do what I think is best for the borough. People may not agree with me, or I may have different opinions, but my heart's in the right place, and I'm trying to do what I think is best for the town going forward. So thank you.
Very good.
Well, I have to admit that I did some house cleaning and throwing things out in the new year, and as I was throwing something out, I thought, wow, I'm not going to throw this out. And I found something that I said probably, I think it was 2011 or 2012, and I thought it might be appropriate, because I do think that this works, and this is what I still believe that we should be doing. I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's not appropriate, but the first thing is inclusion. We are all Stone Harbor, and everyone deserves to have a voice that will be heard. Transparency. There should be nothing to hide, so we will all practice government together. Order. A careful step-by-step process will assure good results. Some more goals. Change. I to we. Them to us. Closed to open. Concerns to solutions. And my way to our way. And finally, silence to discussion. So it's still good words, and I think together we can do them.
Well done.
Well, congratulations to those, the four of you who were sworn in tonight. And Jennifer, welcome, our newest person, our newest council person. Best of luck to you. Anything I can do, you know where to find me. I'm here to help you and do not hesitate to reach out. And to the existing council, Ray and Josie, I hope you guys have a great year. To all the employees and professionals, I look forward to working with all of you for yet another year, and I hope you all have a great year as well. To our incoming Borough Administrator, as of January 21st, Mr. Robert Smith, we all look forward to working with you and the public. You're going to hear more about Mr. Smith when he comes officially on board. He's been in Borough Hall all day yesterday and then today, and is making his way in. He still is actually at his old job, blah, 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 but he's been here already, and he's been meeting people, and he already met the management team. So we're looking forward to that change. That doesn't mean we won't miss Jill, so I don't want to lose that as we talk about how excited we are for Mr. Smith, but Jill, we shall say, we shall say that goodbye for another day. But we're looking very forward to working with Mr. Smith. You can't land in a better town, I'll tell you that. So anyway, just a little interesting thing. My Facebook page yesterday reminded me that I hit a milestone yesterday. 10 years ago yesterday, I was sworn in for the first time to serve on this governing body. It was January 6, 2010, so I've spent a decade now on this dais. At that time, my good friend Sheriff Gary Schaefer swore me in, and I was nervous, and I can remember feeling like the audience must be able to see my heart pounding. You know, you're just so kind of keyed up and nervous. I sat in Mr. Parsick's chair for seven years. I've served on every committee over those seven years with the exception of Public Works. Grant, any particular reason why that? Have you been blocking that all these years, maybe? I don't know, but, yeah, never served on Public Works. So seven years I sat in Mr. Parsick's chair, three years I've been sitting in this chair. Three years ago, I was sworn in as mayor. Still continues to be the greatest honor and privilege of my professional life to serve in this capacity. It's a job and a responsibility that I take seriously and that I tend to seven days a week. 2020 will be no different than any other year. I will continue to fulfill my promise to serve the voters and the taxpayers of Stone Harbor to the best of my ability. Many of you often hear me say this. If you woke up in Stone Harbor this morning, you're ahead of the game. So here we sit, the seven members of this governing body, waking up ahead of the game. Let's work together in 2020 to maintain what we all know to be the seashore at its best. In closing, I would like to thank one other person who lives the office of the mayor seven days a week, right alongside me, and that's the first man, my husband and my BFF, Doug Dunhour, in the back row. Thank you for another year of unwavering support and patience, and I'm sure you're excited to do it all over again, another year. For the rest of you, I'm sure you can picture what it's like to live with me. Every day is a party, right up. So a happy and healthy 2020 to all of you. And again, I thank you for this honor of serving as the mayor of Stone Harbor. We'll now have the second hearing of the public, and when wishing to address mayor and council, may do so at this time by coming forward and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close. Oh, I keep cutting everybody off. I got to look up.
Bernadette Parsick, 9925 Sunset. I just want to welcome everyone. I'm glad everyone won. It's going to be a great year. And Mayor, I have to say, you make me laugh, and you are a great mayor, and you have led this town into opening up all the meetings. People know what's happening now. So thank you again. Great job.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
The money is available.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Forgot my gavel. First meeting of the year, and I forgot to get...